I'm going to call this meeting the Gloucester Public Schools School Committee to order. I'll remind everybody that the mission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful, engaged, lifelong learners. This meeting is recorded by video and audio in accordance with the state open meeting law, consistent with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and banning gatherings of more than 10 people. The meeting will be conducted by remote participation. If you are calling in on the phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you're watching on a computer or a device, there is a raise hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during the public input to be recognized to speak. And Maria, could we have a roll call for attendance?
Ms. Watson.
Here.
Ms. Weason.
Here.
Kathy Clancy.
Here.
Mr. Fovazza. I don't see him. Chairman Pope.
Here.
Ms. Prince.
Here.
And Mayor Taken.
Here.
Okay. Thank you very much, everybody, and I'd like to welcome the public into our public hearing on the budget that we have proposed to present to the city. The process is this. Back in the end of February, we voted this budget, maybe it was the beginning of March, and we will take public input on this budget. And by the end of April, we will take into consideration changes because things do change. Like, a lot of things that we budget right now, well, not a lot, but some things that we budget right now are in flux, and such as what we're going to have to pay for increase in for healthcare, as the most easily understandable example. But there are other things like that, retirements on and on, that affect our budget. And so we'll constantly be changing it to adjust it to the current circumstances. But the big picture will be presented tonight, and we will vote on a budget to send to the administration, the city administration, at the end of the month. The city administration will come forth with their recommendations to the city council. The city council will review all aspects of the city's budget, including the school departments. And I believe it's May 27th, we will present our budget at that point to the city council's budget and finance subcommittee. Later, a few weeks later, there will be a public hearing on the entire city budget, and then the city council will pass a final budget to the mayor and send it back to the mayor and to the school committee. And at that point, we will make the final adjustments before the end of June to bring our budget in line with what the city has recommended, as well as any changes that have come up since then. So with that being said, I am going to turn it over to Ben and Gary.
Jonathan?
Yes?
I don't know if the school committee's ever done this, and we've never done this. Can we just please have a moment of silence for Olivia Pike and all the staff members and everyone else at the Gloucester High School and all her friends? It's just, I know we're all just devastated, and there's no way, you know, we can take that pain away from any one of yous, but just maybe, I'm just heartbroken, a moment of silence just for our hearts, just to be consoled for a minute.
Absolutely. So we'll take a moment of silence for Olivia Pike. Thank you. Gary?
It's your show.
Actually, I'll take it from here, I think, right? Thank you, Chairman Pope, Mayor Taken, members of the school committee. So it has been a challenging week, obviously many, many levels. So thank you, Mayor Taken, for bringing us to take a moment in memory of Olivia Pike. So we're going to go over the proposed budget tonight. This is essentially the same presentation with the same amounts that you've seen that were posted publicly. The presentation that you gave, Gary and I gave in February, it'd be a little shorter than that, with all the details of those that have been posted, and then we'll get a chance to hear from the public. Input on the proposed budget, which will be very helpful, so let me just jump in. So I do always like to remind folks of what we've been doing to develop the budget. It certainly has been a collaborative process with leaders across the district. We began this in November, and then had a few, couple different rounds of meetings with principals and department heads, with myself, assistant supervisor Gary Bach, Greg Bach, sorry, chief finance officer Gary Frisch, meeting repeatedly with our leadership team. We started then sharing with you and the public in very beginning of January, and really focused on the priorities that folks have identified, have identified, have been working on, our strengths, which we want to continue building on. And the purpose of that was to really base the budget in those priorities and in our strengths, so we can continue to improve our work across the district and every school and across all schools. Provided overview presentation towards the end of January, and then have done BNF presentation, a school community presentation, and now here we are at the public hearing, which we're obligated to do by our city statutes and also state regulations. So in terms of the calendar, again, we're past March, we are in April. April 7th, the public hearing on the budget. April 28th, the school committee will have a final vote on the budget submission to the budget submission to the mayor. Between now and then, we'll have a BNF committee subcommittee meeting on Monday, the 12th, and then a school committee meeting on April 14th, so we come today, and that'll provide some further updates on the budget. And then we go through May and into June, as Chairman Pope said, May 27th, we'll do our presentation to the city council. Our budget this year, or for upcoming, the upcoming year to FY22, is built on our strengths and priorities for learning, support, and instruction across our schools. I mentioned that before. Really try to balance coherence across, so K to five within O'Malley, across the high school, but then also across our schools as well, and then have autonomy as well, because of course, our schools have different cultures, different students, different staff, so we really try to balance both coherence across the district and our district-wide goals, as well as autonomy. Simmons, that has her hand up.
Are you, Ben, are you meaning to be sharing a presentation right now?
Yes.
Okay, you're not.
Because we're not seeing it.
Thank you very much. That's helpful. All right. Not sure why that's happening. I think that's the first time I didn't check that you guys could see a presentation, and should have. Let me, wait a minute. Probably because I didn't hit share, right? You think that might have something to do with it?
Heard that could happen.
A second here. Okay. Okay, do you see a presentation now? No.
Nope.
I do, but I'm.
Well, your screen, we see your screen. We see your screen, but not the presentation.
Okay. Okay, that's two strikes. Let's see, one more time here. I'm not sure what happens after two strikes. Okay, here we go. How about this time? Here we go. Okay, just, that's the calendar upcoming, April 20, April 7th today, April 28th, school committee votes on the budget to submit to the mayor. And then we work towards, through May and into June, following the city process. Guiding principles. So as I mentioned, our budget is based on our building on our strengths and our priorities for learning, support, and instruction. It's connected to the district improvement plan, as we described in earlier presentations. We're first building a budget for a normal year. We are expecting at this point, a normal year. We do have, and I'll talk about contingencies later, but also are preparing for the what-ifs. But we are hoping and really working towards a normal year next year. As we have said throughout the budget planning process, moderation and financial prudence are a must. That, just for example, we've been financially prudent this fiscal year, knowing that we may have had to change things, didn't know what was coming, but then we had to return to the regular school day pretty quickly because of a state guidance or directive. And thankfully, we've been frugal all year, so we had grant money and others, dollars that we were able to use, rather than spending those quickly and soon, because as we all know, things change. And especially in the global pandemic, things can change anytime, just because we're on a good path to vaccinations now, although we are hopeful that things return to normal, we have to continue to be prudent with all the financial, with all the revenue and grants at our disposal. We have a few budget priorities here. Some of these are, I'll describe these later, but targeted academic support and intervention. So how do we support and accelerate our students and understand how they're doing? Our collaborative assessment of student learning, so how do teachers and staff and school leaders, you know, work together, understand how our students are doing, and then know exactly how to provide supports or acceleration for them? We always, every school and every district always needs to continue to strengthen core instruction and develop as a professional practice. We have identified over the past year, two things. One, really come to grips with our expanded English language learner population, but also in part because of the pandemic, really understanding much, much more clearly what type of support our English language learners need, and additional support, in particular additional support they need on a variety of levels, that on the students and their families, in order to engage as full members of our school community. We will continue and really build on the recent investments that the school committee has made in social, emotional health. We have made a lot of recent investments in technology in order to maintain those and keep them going and use them wisely and well. We need to make, continue to make some more investments in, especially in staff on that. And then we'll be working on capital planning to maintain our building equipment and also our infrastructure and facilities. So we're working on all that, and you'll see, you should, as you've seen, and I hope the public has seen, how that's reflected in our budget. So just a couple background slides here. You know, like many organizations, schools are no different than this. The vast majority of our resources are going into salaries because we are a people business, and the strength of our schools and system really depends on really high-quality people that we hire, retain, keep supporting, help them develop as professionals. So you always see the vast majority, in this case, 86% of our expenses going into salary and benefits for our staff. Our ordinary expenses, you see that 14% of our budget is ordinary expenses, those are broken down in these areas. You see some of the larger places being supplies, special education, and also transportation as well across the district. So some changes that we see every year, so sometimes these are up, sometimes they're down, mostly they're up. The cost of living adjustments, we can't, we expect those every year. Health insurance increases, we expect those almost every single year. There's step and lane changes as part of our contractual agreements with our labor partners. Retirements often are typically, we plan for some savings on retirements. Typically, we'll have either changed positions, adjusted positions, some new positions perhaps, and also program expenses. And then also always paying close attention to our out-of-district tuition costs. This year, we are benefiting from graduations, but also that's changing as well, as we were describing earlier. There are changes at this point, sort of week to week, month to month, as we plan and prepare for next year. So just in terms of the summary numbers, the top-line numbers, you see the, this year, our proposed budget is $45,600,000. That's an increase, a total increase of 1.25 million, which amounts to 2.82% overall increase. Really important, this line, which is actually the smallest font, is perhaps one of the most important lines on this slide, is that if we remove our health insurance increases, the increase to expenses is $724,000, which is only about a 1.9% increase. So as you can see, about, I guess, it's a third or so, or more than a third, 40% or so of our increase is expected to happen through health care cost increases. This is the summary budget that we posted publicly. It breaks the budget down by school or sort of operator program, so you'll see how we have, you know, the different schools there, elementary schools, middle schools, GHS has a few different cost centers for, and so it's broken down into general education, athletics, vocational education. You'll see at central office administration as well. That includes all the operations of our schools in terms of special education, leaders, instruction and learning, budget and finance, human resources, and then a lot of support, administrative support in all, in those offices, to make sure that we hire people well, we pay them on time, they're taken care of in terms of health insurance. So some vital functions that any business or any organization needs to supply to their employees. You see there, the total budget before health insurance, so just under 30, or just over 39 million. And as I said before, that's an increase of $724,000 over last year, or 1.89%. Then we add health insurance on top of that, and increase, at this point, the increase that we were expecting is $600,000 about, and that combination adds up to $1.25 million or a 2.82% increase. It's always important to look at our increases, or increases in relation to historical increases, and as you can see, this is right in line, you know, with recent increases over a six-year average. So just to summarize some of the significant cost adjustments for FY22 that we're planning at this point, you'll see them here, salary increases, order expenses increases, some new programs, a few new, some new positions in order to identify our priorities, and I'll explain those in a little bit, as I have explained them earlier this year. Out-of-district tuition, we expect to go down, maybe not as much as is listed here because of those changes we're seeing, and then also some adjustments in prepaid tuition, we may be able to adjust that as well going forward. So this is our health insurance at this point, estimating that we would increase by 8.6%. As I showed you earlier, that's over $600,000, an increase in our increase in costs. Of course, the city of Gloucester, and therefore the schools, is a member of the GIC group, the statewide group, and we also continue to provide very generous benefits in terms of the city and the city and school department paying a very generous portion of the health, of the share of healthcare for our employees, which is a significant benefit for each of our employees. Average tuition, you'll see, we are anticipating fewer pupils next year out of district. That's largely because of graduating students. We will, as we always do, maintain a contingency for out-of-district tuition. This is for students who come in at this point, enter our schools, or enter next year, anytime during the school year. And that's a contingency we always have every single year, and every school district I've worked in also maintains a out-of-district tuition contingency, just like this. Those are some positions we are trying to, we are going to be adding next year in order to address our priorities. So first of all, supporting English language learners, O'Malley, an O'Malley teacher, that's one FTE, that'll be split between one of the elementary schools and O'Malley. I'm trying to consolidate, we have some sort of pieces and parts of people across different buildings, and want to make it clear, so we have 1.0 at O'Malley, and then 2.5's combined at Beaman and Plumco, I believe it is. We also want to support our English language learners' families, and actually all families, a bilingual family outreach coordinator. This person, as I've explained, would be having multiple roles. One very important role, working with all families, would be in our registration and outreach to families who are registering and are new to Gloucester or coming into our schools. This person also would develop, help us sort of cement and develop and grow partnerships that are supporting families. So there are many fabulous partners, partner organizations in Gloucester and around Gloucester that work with our schools, in some ways, in some individual way, but we know we can make that stronger by having someone who's actually really looking at those and working with Christine Castle on developing those further, so we can support our families better on a variety of levels. And then the last piece would be working with our bilingual, our multilingual families, bilingual families, in terms of outreach, and that support on acclimating to our schools, that support in terms of academic success for their students, that's support in terms of translation. So it's a multifaceted role that's really about supporting families in a variety of ways, sort of all families in a variety of ways. And in order to support all families, we are really hoping and looking for someone who speaks multiple languages. English teacher, so this helps with the high school's sustainable improvement plan in terms of targeting academic support and intervention. So these are students who need additional support in English, and not, not English learners in this case, but in terms of literacy skills, who are maybe behind and needed, needed sort of a second dose of English and literacy. And that also helps us in the priority area of strengthening core instruction and professional practice. This teacher can work with other teachers as well in terms of remediation and targeted support. We want to continue to develop at the elementary and middle school, our math, math instruction we are taking on at the elementary school, a new curriculum that we've been testing and piloting, and so that, this will help our teachers, our teacher teams across all elementary schools really develop that and do that well, support them in that, and also support in an understanding how all our learners are doing in math, and assess their student learning together, and then use that assessment of student learning to strengthen and targeting academic support and interventions for those students. And the last piece here is, as I mentioned earlier, we've made quite a bit of investments, not only, not only over the past 12 months, but past years on technology. Things are more and more connected between our Chromebooks, to our smartboards, to our phones, and all of that recent investment in technology will not be used well and not be able to maintain without additional support in terms of a staff member to do just that. So these are some program increases, and these are, again, tied to our priority areas. So Star 360, something we were doing this year, partly on a grant, and we want to continue that K to eight, so it makes sense to get it in the operating budget. Summer academies and remedying learning gaps. So some of this work here will actually be taken for, will be taken over by federal grants, which will start, will update you on next year, but we do, because of COVID, have to strengthen our targeted support, so you saw some of that in the previous slide. But certainly, our summer academies will really, really need to be robust this year, robust the following year. Some of that will be helpful in terms of, some of the federal grants will be helpful in those areas. We need to continue to, our work on professional development, training our folks and supporting them in their, their learning and their ongoing development is essential always, in terms of being a learning organization that gets better over time. And what we've hit on over the last few years, doing very, very well, is using our in-house homegrown experts to teach others and work with others in professional development, and then also supplementing that with outside experts who are tied into our priorities as well. That isn't a lot of dollars for professional development, but I will say that what I've seen so far from Gloucester, even in this year, which has been obviously a complicated year, we do professional development in-house very, very well through this combination of in-house experts and supplementing that with outside experts as well. We need to continue to, another thing we've learned over the past year is continue to increase how robust our translation services are. We're doing a much better job this year because we've had additional funding in it, and we need to continue that funding, and we'll need to continue that funding, you know, here on out, in terms of, you know, making more and better services available for translation. That's documents, that's in terms of special education meetings, that's registration, and you know, all sorts of different communication, working with families. And then also, we're working closely with the Department of Public Works, we'll tell you more about that at the BNF meeting on Monday, but it makes sense for us to work with the city and DPW, but also maintain some capital and infrastructure budget for ourselves, because we cannot depend solely on the city and DPW to do everything that needs to be done to, whether that's furniture or facility improvements, or infrastructure improvements, and you'll see more about how that proposed dollars will be planned out in the coming week or so. Just a few things here, this just really shows, and you've seen this before, how many devices we've added since 2017? I mean, yeah, since, actually over the last three years, sorry, I guess that's 2017, 2018. And that entire time, we've been working with the same staff. While we've just added a tremendous amount, we're essentially one-to-one throughout the district now, three through 12. And until last year, we were just one-to-one, really, nine through 12. Folks got Chromebooks in eighth grade that they continued on through high school. So we have, I'm not sure, triple, maybe tripling the number of students who are one-to-one, and we do not see that going away anytime soon. So it's up to us to maintain this investment well, and the only way to do that is to make sure we have the staff, that is not only enough staff to do it, so they have the capacity, but also the capability. We are really thrilled with our team right now, they are working, they work incredibly well, but they can't do it all by themselves at this point, need some additional staff on that. These are just examples, as it says, sample requests, had another meeting with DPW today, working through what we've identified through our principals and as priorities for, you know, capital improvements or repairs or furniture replacement, and then working with them to see what they see as priorities, and we'll come forward with a consolidated list on Monday on those. But these are just example, examples of some of the types of things that you might see. And that's, again, part of this is, you know, is this increase in capital products we want, we're asking for in our own budget. And then this is just a recap of all the work we've been doing on supporting social, all the investments that have been made over the past, really, four years, 2017 to 2021, on supporting social, emotional, mental health, and then how we plan to continue to use that, those investments wisely by strengthening the collaboration, strengthening the leadership, strengthening the work, how they work together with both more time for working together, but also more preparation, planning, and professional development for our team that at this point is quite robust in terms of adjustment counselors and school psychologists, excuse me, guys, counselors, and others who are supporting our students in their growing social, emotional needs, largely because they're growing up in more complex, in a more complex society, which has really been shifting quite a few ways, but also especially because of the pandemic and the disconnection that many students are feeling in so many ways. So just one quick update here on COVID-related grants, so you can see that, at this point anyway, we do expect a significant, well, at this, with this presentation, we do, we do see that fewer COVID grants for next year. This does not include the most recent federal government action, so this will change, as we've said before, but at this point... Federal government action, so that's, this will change as we've said before, but at this point. We have allocated some of S R two, and we'll share with this more, in more detail next week. Towards FY twenty one and we'll, we'll, we'll sort of lay that out as you, as we have all year shown you. What each grant is paying for, both this current finance fiscal year and what it may pay for in the future. But just wanted to show you that that's, this is something we're working on and will continue to adjust as we go forward. Always want to point out that Gloucester in terms of pure per people expenditures is in the middle of our Dart districts, these are comparison districts, those that are. Determined to be similar in a variety of factors that may be. Student needs that may be socio, socioeconomic level, that may be the share that the community can contribute to. You know, school funding. But these are districts that are identified as comparable to ours by the Department of Education and as you can see. Smack in the middle, which I think is appropriate and something to, a good place to be in large part in the middle there. So as I mentioned before, there are quite a few contingencies to consider going forward. Although we are hoping for a normal school year, we still need to plan and prepare as if we might have a remote academy. That we may not know that until August, okay, the good news is we know how to. Budget for it now, we know how to plan for it, we think we have a good sense of, you know, we have a very good sense actually what's, what staff it takes. Depending on the size and, and if that happens. We do, of course, also have to plan and any other contingencies that Desi might throw at us related to the COVID or any other. Expectations could be remediation, could be out summer, I mean, they're already having requirements about summer, that sort of stuff, which, and we're planning for those. Food service is, as I've said before, is a big wild card, not being able to. Serve lunches that include à la carte items and not, and, and while we are providing. The state, the federal government is, is allowing us to provide free meals to all students, which is a tremendous benefit. It does mean that we aren't getting the necessary revenue to support our operations or food service operations. To some degree, that's, you know, supplies and food and, and a large degree, that's our, our staff as well, so. That's a, an area that we have to keep close, a close eye on and really can be very significantly impacted. Depending on the approach we have next year to school. And then we have to plan and all of that, those contingencies and others really. Can be mitigated, those needs and likely will be because of our federal grants and perhaps some state grants. Those state grants, as I will say again and again and again, are temporary dollars that will go away within a couple of years. And so we have to use those wisely while we have them. We have to make sure that they're used to good, good impact, we also have to ensure that they're not going towards. Areas that we want to hold on to or keep long term. Otherwise, we will build up programs or staff only to have to cut them in a short, in a short time and that would be. We just want to make sure we, we are planning that way with the expectation that, that money is short term. Next steps, so, as I mentioned earlier, April 12th, we, the BNF subcommittee meeting. April fourteenth, the school committee meeting, we'll give a budget updates at both those times. And then that's aiming towards the school committee vote. On a budget to submit to the mayor on April twenty eighth. Excuse me. We will, as I mentioned throughout this presentation, those presentations will include adjustments in areas such as added district placements. Health insurance costs. And adjustments due to the COVID relief grants, so we're, we can, we, we're allocating those to specific items at this point. Because we had to apply to the state and get it approved by the state, we'll share those with you. Again, because we haven't included those in this presentation, because. We have posted and you, and you approved the public hearing budget and we, and we never changed between. The public hearing budget being approved by you, by the school committee and then the actual public hearing, that would be too confusing, too baffling to folks. And people would be commenting on different versions, so. Think that's all we have for tonight. Just to make sure folks are all caught up, can stop sharing. There we go, that's all I have for the presentation.
Thank you very much. Laura, you have a question?
I do, just, just sort of quickly, do you have any sense of either when you will have guidance from the state? You know, sort of where these numbers will need to be solidified. Around, especially around the summer, do you have any sense of when guidance will be forthcoming from the state on anything? After this school year?
Yeah, so, so they're treating, let me just, so we do have guidance on summer and we're actively, you know. Hiring, planning, you know, putting that all in place, so we're working very, very hard on summer right now. K through twelve. They're treating the summer in terms of protocols and safety at this point like it's this school year, okay? So you think of that continuation, okay, in terms of how we're operating, okay? And then they've, commiserant told us this probably two weeks ago, maybe, maybe, maybe three, I'm not quite sure at this point. So, and then, and then the new school year will be, will be different, I can't tell you and there's been no signal about when we get those sorts of things. You know, we didn't hear last year, I think until May, late May, that we'd be getting guidance in the beginning of July. Okay, and then, of course, we had guides in July and then changed in August and sort of stuff, so. I just can't, I just couldn't speculate on when, I mean, yeah, I just don't know.
Just, it just feels like if we are required to have another remote academy, that has a big impact on the budget.
It does, it does, you know, and, and, and at budget planning, hiring, everything, right? But I just, I don't want to, I can't, I really, I mean, I hate saying I have no idea, but I have no idea.
The truth, okay, thank you.
All right, are there any other questions from the committee before we open it up to the public? Kathy?
Ben, I'm just wondering what the current thought is, I know the summer where you have, we're going to have a lot of intervention and support for students to make sure we. Kind of catch them up or see who's lost ground, but that will likely still be the case in the fall. And so I'm just wondering when we go through this process. Are we planning on adjusting this budget or we, would we look to those COVID relief funds to fund? You know, specific.
Yeah.
Programs for that in the.
It'll be the latter, you know, because, because those funds really are about supporting students academically, socially, emotionally, with mental health. You know, because of COVID and as, and you know, in, in response to the pandemic, so I think it's fair and reasonable for us to. Have, have some positions at that, 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 those, those, you know, short-term positions, it could be a year, it could be two years. That those dollars are paying for, you know, the grant funded positions which we have, always have, you know. But specifically in those areas of remediation, support on academics, social, emotional, mental health, that sort of thing, yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions before we go to the public? Okay, not seeing any, and, and we'll have an opportunity at the end, and, at the end of the public input to. Make comments or, or ask further questions, so. With that being said, I'm going to open up this public hearing on the FY twenty two budget, school budget. And I will recognize you as, as you, raise your hand. And allow you to speak, so. And our Cynthia. Go ahead, Cynthia.
Hi Jonathan, thank you very much, thank you, school committee for hearing the public this evening, I have a question. Gloucester is scheduled to get almost $2 million under the Massachusetts Elementary and Secondary Emergency Leave Fund allocations. And I was just wondering if that was taken into consideration with this, with this next year's budget. And if not, what will that be spent on? In particular, I want to bring up the fact that Veteran School is going to be going to St. Anne's for two years. And what kind of improvements are being made there as far as health and safety? Because we don't know what's going to happen in the fall. You know, I'd like to say that we were all done with this thing now, but. If you asked me last year, I would think we would have been, but, uh-oh, here we are and we're not. So what kind of improvements to HVAC and air exchange and distancing are we going to? Provide at St. Anne's to keep our staff and students safe there and, and. Are any of those funds going to be allocated for that? Thank you.
Okay. Ben, do you want to? Respond to that or Gary? I will say that the, the bulk of the work that's going to be done at St. Anne's has already been determined. By the designers and in conjunction with the arch diocese and they've sort of split up the necessary work. That needs to be done for students to get in there, specifically, I don't have that list in front of me, but. The, the, you know, we're going to make every effort. Or every, or not every effort, we're going, going to make sure that the. The, the students and staff at, at, who are going to be in St. Anne's for two years are going to be safe. And have a healthy environment and if. Where exactly the money for that is coming, I will say that the city council has already appropriated. Right around a million dollars for, for the. To be put into St. Anne's as well as for the Trent there, so Ben, do you want to add to that or Gary?
So I don't think we need to add much to that, as you said, the product budget will take care of a lot of St. Anne's in terms of those renovations and, and. And, and repairs, we reported out at, at school committee. Last week, last week, week before that, and also city council about that. And we'll continue to update the school committee on those repairs and renovations at St. Anne's. You know, and, and so, you know, spacing actually might be easier at St. Anne's than it has at the vets, because some, many of the classrooms are bigger than the vets. That's a good thing, I believe the windows are operable, that's also a good thing. But we'll continue to make sure, we'll make sure that all our schools are ready in terms of any, you know, COVID. Adjustments that need to continue. And, you know, have until the fall to make sure that St. Anne's is ready to go, but we will, and, you know, whether it's, you know, Beaman or St. Anne. Beaman or St. Anne, vets at St. Anne's or, or East Gloucester. You know, we'll be using COVID funds, as I said, to really make sure we're able to support students. As we turn to, you know, regular operations, specifically around. Academics, social, emotional, mental health. Languages, you know, and, and that, no matter where our school is, we're, we're, we, we will do that and we're obligated to do that.
May I follow up?
Go right ahead.
I'll be filing a 150 information request for the air exchange rate at St. Anne's before we go in, so. I'd appreciate that if you could provide that for us, I'll do that formally, but we, we like to make sure that that. Is indeed safe for staff and students.
Alright.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jonathan, you're muted.
Sorry, anyone else would like to make a comment or ask a question on the. Presentation on the FY twenty two budget? Well, Ben and Gary must have done a very, very good job. Because apparently there are no questions. No more questions. Give it another minute. But as I said, you need to raise your hand for me to be able to recognize you. And you raise your hand by if you're on phone to press star nine or if you're viewing. On a device or a computer, there's a raise hand. Button down at the bottom that you can tap and I will see it. Okay, Mary Ann.
Hi, Mary Ann Boucher, ninety-three month plus an avenue, thank you, I'd like to know if. Since you do have issues with traffic at West Parish, if a police officer is included. In your budget for next year or someone is in that budget. Where there are issues over there and if that will be included. Also for the new proposed school as well as. What will the budget be for roadwork that you spoke of in regards to? The last meeting, how will that be handled, are you turning that over to the city, is the city going to be responsible? For additional roadwork that's going to come along with this proposed school, I'd like to know how that is going to be handled. And if you could let me know, thank you.
Okay, well, this is a budget for next year. And the new school will not be opened until the FY twenty four budget, which is, is not. In play at this, we, we do our budgets one year at a time, certainly we look. We try to look forward as much as we can, but one, once again, we only do a budget for one year at a time. As far as mitigation of traffic issues, a lot of the traffic issues that we're dealing with right now. Are a result of the pandemic and a result of the restrictions that we have had to. Respond to. For of limiting students on buses. And which is substantial, we were only allowed to put twenty. Twenty-one or twenty-two students on a sixty-five person bus, which meant we had to restrict. Who could ride the bus severely. I think we'll have a, a great deal of discussion going forward. About trying to increase bus ridership. And the assumption on this budget is that we are going to be back in school in person. With no restrictions on, on spacing and as well as on busing. That may or may not be true, which is why we have a number of contingencies. That we're holding mostly through the grants that we're going to be receiving to, to deal with. The, the possibility that we're not going to be able to have school the way we budgeted, but. Like I say, the, the solution to the traffic problems. It is not. Is, is having parents put the kids on buses instead of driving them. And that would, would make the big difference, because one bus. Full of kids eliminates thirty or perhaps more cars coming to the school. So.
And I, can I continue on that, and I'm just would push back by saying, last year, Jonathan, you said that fifty-seven. Parents or children, fifty-seven students. Were entitled to free busing at West Parish, but did not take it, so that's why. I'm presenting this is because you can't force parents to put a child on a bus from what I understand and. I just know that there is an issue, I don't, it, it's, it's the, it's the elephant in the room that nobody ever wants to talk about. So there's got to be some sort of. Funding in place to do something. For the safety of all of these children, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have. A CK.
I know, before CK, can I just jump in on that one, please?
Sure.
Okay, also, first of all, we're going to have some cluster at St. Anne's also. And you know what, the police are there. And we're going to make sure that, you know what, we're going to work ahead of time when we figure out exactly what's going to happen in September. And we figure out if we are going to be going, you know. Everyone on the bus, you know, or people don't want to put on the bus, or we get to get full, you know, no social distance, whatever, we don't know what's going to happen with this COVID. And there are going to be parents who choose not to get vaccinated and don't want their kids there, we will work on that, this, you know, I, I think of anything on this pandemic right now. Wasn't supposed to last, it didn't, and we're learning from our mistakes and we're learning that, that, what, what, we, we. Wasn't supposed to last, it didn't. And we're learning from our mistakes and we're learning that we 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 need to be proactive. I don't think that, you know, the safety of the children should be a whole heart, in my opinion, a hundred percent responsibility on the school side either. I mean, that's something we're going to have to do. I know there were some concerns, you know, teachers or everyone else or principals out there, you know, helping out. Well, that's what our teachers and our staff and everyone does. Do we want them always doing that? Absolutely not, because, you know, certain ways it 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 could be, you know, what's the responsibility and what's the liability? So I really think that when a school starts second August, that we know what's going to happen, what the criteria we have and what we're going to do is do we hire, you know, some crossing gods, but differently? Do we hire retired police officers? Do what we do? Ed and I, the chief of police, were talking about, you know, some of the alternatives that we can and cannot do. So you know what? We we hear you, you know, I understand. And it's and it's hard because, you know, right now also, some of the COVID was say the CARES Act money and it's not just like before that we had a deadline. We have a little bit more to do. And you know what? That could be also a share that we didn't put in the budget either side, but we know that we'll have to do it together. And we're not going to sit there next September here that, you know what, the budget, the school, this, no, we have to now really work together. We want to make sure that everyone's safe, and I think that's a responsibility on both of us. As far as St. Anne's. Cynthia, I know that the roofs and the outside and some of the vents and some of the heater system is the responsibility of the Archdiocese. We get to paint. Definitely, the DPW with the Ben and like they did on our other schools will go in. And they're going to continue doing that, and we're going to continue working together because, I mean, this is, this is no more teachers or or this is no more city or school. This is life. And so we're going to do the best we can to make everyone's life a little bit easier, especially on Pleasant Street going down to Smith Street. So we're going to have to put the, you know, the little flashing lights again, and we're going to have to make sure that, you know, the signs are up and stuff. So we'll work together, Jonathan.
Thank you, may it taken. CK, please go ahead. Okay, can you? You've got your hand up. I've unmuted you. But we don't hear you. Okay, that being said, I'll come back to you if we can straighten that out. I'm going to go to Heidi Wakeman. Heidi, go ahead. You're muted. We can't hear you. We still can't hear you.
For responding with this, can you hear me or am I frozen?
Now we can.
Okay, thank you. I really wanted to say thank you for responding with this budget to our growing ELL population with the positions that you are funding and with the acknowledgement that it's an asset to our community. They are an important and growing part of our community. I work at O'Malley School and we've been working with a dedicated staff, including an AmeriCorps volunteer, which has really been helpful. And I just want to say thank you for protecting some of the most vulnerable people in our community. It's a social justice issue. And I want Gloucester to stand for Gloucester Social Justice and equality, not just through lip service, but through services and through really money. I know this is where a lot of this is about money. So thank you. And we're doing a great job at O'Malley and throughout the district. So thank you.
Thank you very much. It's good to hear. CK, we'll try again. Let's see if we can hear you this time. You're muted if that, if you can hear us. Okay, well, I don't seem to be making any headway on that one. Let's go. We have somebody calling in on a a phone and it's nine seven eight five eight four three oh one nine. So please. Okay. You should be able to speak.
Can you? Can you hear me?
Yes, please.
This is Catherine Ryan. I I couldn't get through on the other one.
Okay, well, we can hear you now.
There's a lot of feedback online. Let me see if I turn this down. Can you? You can still hear me?
Yes.
Is it possible, Superintendent, can you can you put up the pie chart with the the very beginning of your presentation that has the eighty percent of salaries? I think you said it was eighty-something percent.
Why I'm doing that, why don't you continue? Sorry, give me a moment here.
Thanks so much.
Sure, one second.
So I just want to I I want to throw in some support for what Heidi Wakeman just said as well for supporting the ELL position. And I really also would like to see in the budget some accountability or strategy for prioritizing some teacher diversity hiring. I didn't see that. I also really noticed in the paper and I noticed in the way the presentation was framed that it ends up landing on health benefits and salaries, which in turn leads to discussions about teachers and unions. And I really want to see if there's a way to talk about the school budget in its entirety and including all of the stuff that the city and the city other departments put in. So, you know, where where your budget is landing somewhere forty-three to forty-five million versus the entire city budget, you know, in the past couple of years, you guys have estimated that it's about fifty-two percent of the total city budget. And you know, the enrollment in two thousand and one was four thousand two hundred and three students. The enrollment in twenty twenty is two thousand seven hundred and sixty-six. And in the past ten years, we're almost down a third. So I think that not talking about enrollment, not talking about the choice out, the Essex Tech, the school administration rent, you know, all the school facilities, all the stuff that the city does of DPW, IT, all the shared stuff. You know, and it's also the administration budget, you know, you defended the administration budget when you got towards the end. And, you know, I just pulled that up. You know, we could, we could go into that as well. Hang on one second. You know, the the director of finance and operations salary is a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. You know, there's the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, the support staff, there's the human resource department, there's the legal department, there's the school administration, and then there are all those same departments at the city level as well. And I I just think it should really be the full whole budget that you're talking about and the full whole enrollment and the whole context and supporting the state of the team. I I I was so struck that it just landed totally on salary and I I wanted to send the teachers. I mean, I was so impressed by the National Honor Society event that you just held. And the reason that our students get to really be in there is with this incredible staff. That our students get to benefit from that and they get to have that sort of professional development to put on their resume, their resumes to go to applications for schools and none of that would happen without all this extra work of teachers. So that's it. I'm just really mindful of the whole picture, the whole, the whole impact of all of the staff, all of the city. We're all of it in together. And I like the context of the budget as a whole.
Okay, thank you. It it is true that a lot of expenses that are the the realized by the school department do come under different departments in the city. Most notably, the DPW, which pays for the electricity and the gas in the buildings. They plow the school parking lots. But there is a, and Gary will have to remind me what it's called. There's, there's a form that we submit to the state at the at the end of the year, which takes all of those factors into account, all a percentage of all of the the treasurer, the treasurer's office as well as the auditor's office and all of those things. And that number is when we showed the the slide that showed the cost per pupil. Those numbers are reflected if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, Gary, but those, all of those expenses are reflected in that cost per pupil. So we do, we we are aware of of all of the things that we don't pay for out of our budget. And as well as there are, as you probably noticed, the grants that we receive are not reflected in our budget. But as a matter of fact, we have, and Gary and and Ben could help me, but we have a number of positions that are paid through grants, particularly from special ed, et cetera, Title One, that are are not reflected in the budget. So so thank you for your concern and and we'll take that into account. As far as hiring goes, that wouldn't be reflected in the budget. We can make efforts to to diversify our staff, but that's we can't pay people more because of the unions. We have to pay what everybody else gets paid, so that wouldn't be reflected in the budget.
Jonathan, if I may add to what you said, the report that you mentioned that we file with the state is called the end of year report. And it includes all the expenses that are paid by the city on behalf of the school department. And if you go to our website and the lower right-hand corners has a little budget icon for FY twenty-two proposed budget. If you click on that and look to the tabs, what tabs, one through thirteen have a lot of statistical information and has includes that one report that Jonathan mentioned, the end of year report, which includes all the other expenses that you talked about. So if you have any questions after reviewing that, we'd be more than happy to answer them for you.
You're muted, Jonathan.
Sorry. I I don't see anybody new. We have Catherine, you still have your hand up on both your phone and your thing, but I don't see anybody else. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Or comment or ask a question? Okay. We'll give it another minute. Okay. Like I say, Catherine, you still have your hand up. It's is it, do you have a further question or a comment?
Yes, I do. So I wasn't talking about salaries and competitive salaries. I was talking about a line item that is addressing hiring diverse diversified staff, which is something that you would address, like you would curriculum, like you would maybe need to hire an outside help or an outside firm that's dealing with different, different sources of hiring and outreach. You know, it's actually an intentional part of the budget. I don't mean it in terms of, you know, the actual salary part of it. That's the one thing. And the second thing, I I clearly, you know, I know the budget and I I know where the budget is. I'm talking about how you describe it to the community and how you describe our teachers and how you describe it in a presentation that's going out to everybody. You know, if our enrollment is down a third in ten years, which it is, and not talking about the context of the pricing that has gone up, not talking about that the high school now only has like eight hundred and fourteen students and, you know, other facilities, just the entire context of the conversation of the budget is part of the budget. And yeah, so I know you weren't answering the the question. So I I don't want it only framed in its health benefits and teachers down the line.
All right, thank you. Well, we will that into consideration in our future proposals. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Okay. All right. I'm seeing none. I am going to close the public hearing, although I will say that if you have any comments that you think of or or afterwards or any questions that you consider, you know, you come up with in the future, we're more than welcome to field those questions and 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 receive those comments. You can email any school committee member and it will be distributed to every one of us or and we, if it's a question, we'll pass it on to to Gary or Ben or the appropriate department. So thank you, everybody. We had twenty-four people attending and I'm going to close the public hearing.
Jonathan, can you just say that what our group school addresses for people? Is school committee at Gloucester?
Yeah, it's it's the the first initial and the last name at Gloucesterschools.com.
All right, Jonathan, the group, so it goes to everybody. The the school committee address is schoolcommittee@glosterschools.
Yeah. Okay. All right. And you can see that on on the website, our website, and there under the school committee also. So is there any comments or questions from the school? all right. Melissa.
Are we getting ready to end the meeting? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, this is the that's.
I wasn't sure where we were at, that's all. I apologize. So a couple of things. And I brought this up earlier. I'm hoping that the school committee at some point soon can have a conversation of what it would look like to potentially waive bus fees for all students. Maybe if we even did it for a trial period for a year to see what happens. But I think that's a conversation I'm hoping we can have before this budget season is over to see if that's a possibility or if there's interest on the committee to support a movement like that. And also, I had questions on the vocational budget, and I'm just wondering if someone can be prepared to ask, answer a question at our next meeting. I noticed on one of the slides, the amount for the vocational budget went from 334369 to 220591, which is over $100,000. And I also noticed on another slide that I think Gary did it, the prediction for the next couple of years is that the vocational expenses were going to stay the same, which to me sounds a little odd, having sat on a school committee of vocational programs, knowing it's not only salaries go up, but the cost of education goes up as well. So those are just two things that flagged me when I revisited the budget tonight. And I'm just hoping we can have some sort of conversations about that in the future before we do the final budget. I mean, I understand we're going to put a budget forward to the mayor and we still have time afterwards to resolve issues as well. But I just want to, I don't want to lose sight of those two issues.
Just just so it's clear, the city approves appropriates our bottom line. And we have the capacity to change our budget throughout the whole year, essentially by doing transfers. And and that that happens on a regular basis. You know, a budget is is a best guess at a given time and things change and circumstances change. And this year is a perfect example of of sort of all of the maneuvering that we had to do to get through the year. So that being said, we always have the ability to question or or try to change things. The problem is that, you know, if you want to spend more money on something, you've got to take it away from something else at this point. Okay? Anything else before we adjourn?
Melissa, we guess we'll we'll give you the committee a breakdown on the vocational budget. If not Monday, then certainly Wednesday.
Thank you. Like I said, it doesn't need to be immediate. I just, I don't want to lose sight of it. It just seemed like a big figure and the consistency of that same number was just a little red flag. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I can.
Okay, Maria, can we have a roll call vote?
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
Herman Pope.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes, and thank you to everyone that attended tonight, for the attendees. Much appreciation.
Mayor Taken.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. And I'd like to reiterate what Melissa just said. Thanks, everybody, for for being concerned about our our budget. And and the input will be all taken under advisement. And like I say, we, it's it's always a work in progress. So with that being said, I'm going to adjourn this meeting of the school committee. Thank you much.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.